Okay, good morning, everybody. The computer says it's now 10 o'clock. And as soon as everybody's in their places, I will call this meeting to order. And today, it's my privilege to lead the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you will all join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, first order of business is public comment. Everybody is limited to three minutes. And we do have a timer. And if you want to go beyond that, I will cut you off. That's not a threat, that's a promise. So, having said that, your public comment is not only limited to three minutes, but we have a yellow light which indicates that you have 30 seconds left. And when the light turns red, please sit down. And the open meeting law does not expressly prohibit responses to public comments by the commissioners. However, responses from commissioners to unlisted public comment topics could become deliberation on a matter without notice to the public. On the advice of legal counsel and to ensure the public has notice of all matters, the Board of County Commissioners will consider. Commissioners may choose not to respond to public comments except to correct factual inaccuracies. With that being said, sir, public comment is now open.
Thank you. Jim Jackson. Wanted to start out by saying we were extremely disappointed at the last meeting when you failed to pass the ordinance to ban trucks up on Johnson Lane. We've had a community meeting up there, and most of the people are extremely upset. They try to understand why, but they can't see no reason why when all of the studies that were done were obviously fraudulent and left out so many things or pulled core samples that weren't core samples. There were only four samples pulled, and they were from the surface, not down where all the problem minerals are going to be. Your decision, I believe, opened a Pandora's Box. You had two individuals that got up here, ranted and raved, and threatened to sue the county. Not long after that, you postponed the vote on that for 90 days to negotiate. To negotiate with what? They made their point very clear. They went their way, or they'll sue you. The Pandora's Box you've opened is now any developer or significant landowner in the county that wants his way will just come up here and say, "We're going to sue you," and expect you to cave and let them have their way. Well, the people of the county are looking at that, saying, "Well, maybe that's what we need to do. Maybe they'll listen to us then." No decision's been made on that yet, but that is out there being talked about. The other thing that came to light over the past week, and this comes right from a BLM employee, is we believe you've been lied to. Knox isn't only going to be using the area out there on VIA property, but they're also planning on taking the camping area just off the top of Johnson Lane and making that a staging area and parking area for all of their employees and all of their trucks. I don't know if you know about this or not, but if you don't, then they've lied to you. They're not holding just to their hundred-and-some acres up there. They're spreading out, and that's going to create bigger problems for all of us that live up there with the dust, the noise, and everything else that comes with that. My suggestion is that you change the ordinance, ban truck traffic on Johnson Lane all the way down to Vicki, which is where the industrial areas stops, and across on Fremont, and make sure that you include Sunrise Pass. Reason for this is, over the past two weeks, I have run into more gravel trucks. Knox has quite a few of them, running back and forth through all of the residential areas up there. I don't know what they're doing, but they're very busy, almost running over traffic. One of the trucks was coming across one of the residential streets, and I tried to keep up with them. Sorry, but I was going over the speed limit. It was a 35 mile an hour speed limit, and at 45, I couldn't keep up with them. I'll be back later. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further public comment?
Casey Rogers for the record. I'm just here letting you know that we're still concerned about the two towers going up. It's going over to planning right now. The town board has denied it, but it is coming forward with the Planning Commission, and we're still here, and we just want to let you know we're coming back. We're still looking for the ordinance to come through, maybe through the county commissioners blocking these towers from coming up anymore. Death towers is what we call them. And Noah Assad, I need you to answer my email. That's about it. Thanks.
Any further public comment? Do we have any public comment online?
Michelle Pablo, Senior Deputy Clerk for the Record. We do show one person with public comment. Mr. Slade, do you have public comment, opening public comment?
Yes, I do. Can you hear me?
We can. Please state your name for the record, and we'll start your time.
Jim Slade. I certainly agree with Mr. Jackson's comments and his concerns about the Painted Rock Mine and Johnson Lane, even though that is not my number-one issue, but he and others have weighed in on that in the public interest, and I agree with them. I, too, was disappointed and surprised that you decided to continue this with the idea, apparently, of coming to some kind of a compromise theoretically. I'm not sure what kind of compromise you or the residents of Johnson Lane would find acceptable in this matter. I don't remember the exact numbers and times, but, you know, if they have now 170 trucks a day between 6:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m., would any of you or the residents find, if they offered 140 trucks between 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m., would that be a good compromise? I don't think you or any of the residents would think that was a reasonable compromise. So, I don't know where you're going with this. I know you're afraid about being sued. You should never make decisions based on being sued. As you saw with the VHRs north of Cave Rock, which I thought was a very poor decision, not well reasoned, yet it passed by a 3 to 2 vote, which I was surprised and disappointed with. I thought that that was the poster child for a decision that was arbitrary and capricious, that the homeowners who were living there who were unhappy with that decision sued Douglas County. And when that county, as you all know, went to court, Judge Young ruled that the court would, as usual, pay deference to the decision of the board. Now, I thought that was unfortunate, but that is the way that it has worked many times here. So regardless of what compromise you might come up with, with Knox excavating and their project at the Painted Rock Mine, they're going to sue you anyhow. So you might as well just make the right decision, which it seemed like you were on the verge of doing last meeting, and let them sue you. And in all likelihood, the judge will side with you and pay deference to the board's decision because they are very reluctant to overturn a board decision. So I don't understand why you continued this. You need to get on with it, make the right decision for the citizens of Douglas County, not only for the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens, but for the fiscal condition of the county and the massive cost of road repairs that these trucks would necessitate on your part. So that's my advice. Thank you.
Any further comment, public comment online?
Michelle Pablo, Senior Deputy Clerk for the Record. I have no additional public comment through Zoom.
And we have one more here in chambers.
Thank you. Elizabeth Lernhard for the record. I'm coming here today to talk about the Forest Service. I'm very well aware you have no jurisdiction over it, but I still think it needs to be on the record, and the powers that are be that talk to the Forest Service up there in Armark need to take this into account. They have been destroying Zephyr Shoals. I've sent pictures because, you know, I can't show them here, so you can look at them. I have gotten more since then. They are coming out of the woodworks from neighbors and people that walk that area, and it is very disturbing that we have not heard anything back since the meeting earlier this year. They have cut the local community off by further avoiding any communications. Our calls and emails remain unanswered. Since Douglas County Administration has been communicating with them at Warrior Way, I'm begging you to intervene and help save this public land. It is wrong that a private company as good as owns this pristine lakefront property and plans to exploit it for profit. The public has enjoyed free access and has taken care of it, including trash removal of 8,300 pounds last year. Now it will be fee-only access, and natures and residents will suffer. There's still a fence up. We were promised the fence would come down after Labor Day. It is not down. Multiple animals that go across the Highway 50 there have been killed because of it. Now, in addition to this, there has been more destruction of the Forest Service land south of Elk's Point. I have new pictures, and I'll attach them for your review. The Forest Service bought a nine-acre property south of Darla Court at Round Hill and is planning to put another glamping site there. This is basically my request to look into this and see if the county can prevent more exploitation to happen there. Thank you for the attention.
Thank you. I'll try that again. Any further public comment? Well, to the microphone, sir.
My name is Bill Sarito. I'm a licensed engineering contractor and a contractor for Department of Homeland Security under FEMA. I'd like to direct my comments to our county commissioners regarding the five G towers that are currently proposed to go up in two different locations. Station 14 on County Road, where 220 feet away is the number-one daycare in Douglas County where 105 children spend up to 12 hours a day, ages 1 to 4. Next to the daycare is a dance school where 140 children are currently enrolled. We estimate 200 children at the swim center at any given time, and that is 350 feet away. 475 feet away is our high school where 1,375 children reside up to eight hours a day and a little bit more if they play sports. Over on Stephanie, that proposed tower is right across the street from Pinion Elementary School, the ball fields, and the tennis court. In my professional opinion, these towers do not belong near schools. Now, my engineers have found 13 different code violations that these towers represent. One that I'll tell you about is that these are aesthetically displeasing. They look like damn toilet bowl brushes, and they don't belong in our sleepy town of Maria, the owner of the daycare across 220 feet away from the proposed tower at Station 14, has 105 children there. Eighty of those parents said they will pull their children out of the school if that tower goes up. They're concerned about the health effort, the health effects that RF represents to their children. Okay, that would kill the business. Only 40 parents, 40 parents leave, that will kill her business. She is a certified disadvantaged woman-owned small business. Now, I know our county and our commissioners aren't in the business of killing small business. This is just one business that will fail. We're not sure how many more will. All right? I've got a lot more to say. It's coming your way soon, and I just want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Any further public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment, and we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Commissioner Gardner?
I move for the approval of the proposed agenda as presented.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. And for the record, Commissioner Tarkanian is in the meeting electronically today. All right, moving on to the approval of the previous minutes for possible action, discussion to approve the draft minutes of the August 1, 2024 regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Any changes or additions? Seeing none, I'll take a motion.
I move approval of the draft minutes of the August 1 meeting.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 And any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. We will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Douglas County Liquor Board. And with that, we add the sheriff to the board, and we will now have a six-member board. For possible action, discussion to approve the addition of William Javier Soto de León to the existing packaged retail liquor license for Warm Springs CVS LLC, DBA as CVS number 7683. William Javier Soto de León has signed a waiver of notice of hearing. Warm Springs Road, CVS LLC, DBA, CVS number 7683, is located on Highway 31, State, Highway at 31 Highway 50, Suite 101, State Line Nevada, 894499, and Under Sheriff Engels.
Good morning. Under Sheriff Ron Elgus for the record. The file's been reviewed, and we're not contesting the additional name addition.
Mr. Chair. Based on that, I move for the approval of the addition of William Javier Soto de León to the existing packaged retail liquor license for Warm Springs Road, CVS LLC, DBA, CVS number 7683. And Mr. De León has signed a waiver of notice of hearing, and the Warm Springs Road, CVS LLC, DBA, CVS number 7683, is located at 31 Highway 50, Suite 101, State Line Nevada, 89449, as presented.
Thank you very much. So we will open to public comment. Is there any public comment on this item?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
We've indicated in our agenda that we don't take public comment on liquor board action items.
I thought we would open it just in case, because we all know that we have someone who objects to everything that has to do with the liquor board. Unfortunately, that person is not here, or fortunately. So I will bring it back to the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries 6-0. We will now adjourn as the Douglas County Liquor Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. The next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. We have items A through X. Is there any motion on the consent calendar?
I move approval of consent agenda items A through X.
Been moved and seconded. Do I go to public comment on that one? I do not go to public comment on that one. Life is good. In that case, it's been moved and seconded to approve the entire consent calendar. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. And thank you, Sheriff.
Mr. Chairman, before you call the next item, Ms. Diana Scott is here with the Daughters of the American Revolution to accept the proclamation.
Oh.
I just learned. Would you like the legislature to give you the voting?
Yes.
Could you do that? Not advised, Sheriff.
Yeah. You'd be so kind. All right, the first item on the administrative agenda is for presentation only. It's a ceremonial presentation, a proclamation, 2024 P-095, designating September the 17th, 2024, as Citizenship Day, and September 17th through the 23rd, 2024, as Constitution Week in Douglas County. And I believe that we have someone here to accept the proclamation.
Yes, we have Ms. Diana Scott here with the Daughters of the American Revolution. Welcome, and come on up. I'll read the proclamation. Okay. Proclamation 2024 P-095, September 17th, 2024, as Citizenship Day, and September 17th through 23rd, 2024, as Constitution Week. Whereas, on September 17th, 1787, the delegates to the Constitutional Convention signed and ratified the United States Constitution and submitted it to the states for approval. Whereas, throughout America's history, in times of turmoil and peace, liberty and oppression, our faith in the Constitution's promise of freedom and democracy has been a steadfast rock of national stability. Whereas, our nation celebrates not only the longest-lived written constitution in world history, but also the enduring commitment of our forebears who upheld the Constitution's core principles throughout the travails of American history. Whereas, in order to address fears of the proposed centralization of federal power, our founders amended the Constitution by adding a Bill of Rights, which provided a series of clear limits on federal power and a litany of protective rights to citizens. Whereas, our republic would surely falter but for the faith and confidence that we collectively place in our Constitution. And whereas, each of us must recognize that we bear a solemn responsibility to promote the ideals of freedom and opportunity throughout our land. Therefore, be it proclaimed by the Douglas County Board of Commissioners that September 17th, 2024, is designated as Citizenship Day, and September 17th through 23rd, 2024, is designated as Constitution Week in Douglas County, Nevada. This proclamation is signed by Chairman Wes Rice and Amy Bergens, our clerk treasurer.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. We'll give you a minute. Okay. And then I'll have a little talk. 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 I just want to say thank you again to the county commissioners for the proclamation. I was doing a scrapbook for our chapter, and I was looking back, and we've been receiving this since 2008, and we really appreciate it. Thank you so much for all your dedication, and ours, too. Thank you.
We will move to item number two for possible action. Discussion to appoint a qualified applicant as Douglas County's private sector representative to the Western Nevada Development District, we know as W N D D. The Board of Directors due to the resignation of Kitty McKay, and this will be presented by our county manager, Jennifer Davidson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Jennifer Davidson, county manager. With me here today is Nikki Roodelbach, our manager of Economic Vitality in the county manager's office. I asked Ms. Roodelbach to join me here today because she will be working very closely in her capacity as Economic Vitality manager with the individual that you appoint. And with that, Mr. Chairman, and with your permission, I'll turn it over briefly to Ms. Roodelbach for her comments.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Nikki Roodelbach, Economic Vitality manager. There is one vacancy on the Western Nevada Development District Board, W N D D is how we'll refer to it, as former ward member Kitty McKay has resigned from the Douglas County private sector. At this time, with the three applicants that we had, I only have one in the audience. We moved so swiftly that two of them are not here yet, nor is Chris Brandon, the executive director of Western Nevada Development District. So if you have any questions, we'll do our best to answer. But otherwise, a little bit about W N D D. It's an economic development district designated by the U.S. Economic Development Administration. W N D D's mission is to work in regional collaboration with public and private entities to create an environment within which economic development can occur. And at that time, at this time, the W N D D bylaws allow for the third seat, which can be a private sector representative from the business, industrial, professional, or educational segments of our jurisdiction. And we have the three applicants. As I mentioned, Alicia Main is in the audience. If you had any questions for her, she would be happy to acknowledge them.
I believe we have one person here that wanted to be interviewed, and would you be so kind as to step up and introduce yourself? For those that don't know you, it's a pleasure to see you.
My good. I'm Alicia Main. I am here, and I would love the opportunity to use my skills to, I don't know, to collaborate with our community and use my expertise. I have worked with W N D D quite often on several things. As you guys, I do know most of you. I am the executive director of the Carson Valley Chamber of Commerce, and I feel I'm uniquely positioned to help further what we need to have furthered and collaborate with our community as well as our other organizations. But I'll answer any questions you guys have from my resume or my application.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I appreciated the comments that you wrote in your application with reference to our quality of life and how businesses may negatively impact or positively enhance our quality of life. And I want to ask you to maybe take a moment and explain how you would assess what is a business going to do to negatively or positively impact our quality of life here.
You know, I grew up here. I'm very vested in our community. I have three children. I just sent one off to Utah Tech, which is in St. George. And I think it's really important for us to have the right businesses here. As you guys know, I represent the business community in my job, but a lot of times, we have businesses that may not fit. We want to make sure that we have the right business community here that are going to be successful, that is going to bring that quality of life to our residents. And so that's part of that. And I know that we've sat on a lot of workshops to, for outreach to the community as a whole, as well as our business community. And I like how our Douglas County staff has taken all that input, put it together, brought it back, and were able to reevaluate that.
Any further questions? Commissioner?
Thank you. I don't really have a question.
I don't really have a question. I just have an observation. And all I wanted to say is I've also taken the opportunity to review all three applicants. While they are all qualified, yours stands out above the rest. And so I'm so appreciative, really, of you submitting an application to take a position in this role for us. I work with Ms. Main on a very routine basis as the board assignment to the Chamber Board. But anyways, her interest in serving us in this capacity as well is great. And I thank you for, once again, your application.
Any further comments from the board? Saying none, I'll make mine. Yes.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman. I don't want to take away from your comments. Jennifer Davidson, County Manager. I have been informed that Mr. Legend Mayers, another applicant for this appointed position, is also in the audience and would be happy to speak to any questions the commission may have.
Thank you. And I will make my final comment. I have known you since you ascended to the throne at the chamber and you've done a magnificent job. It's been a pleasure to know you over the years. Thank you. And we will now make room back to the microphone for the other candidate who has shown up.
Hello. How's it going?
So far, so good.
Good, good. My name's Legend. Well, while I'm here, I was looking into ways to serve the community. I just moved back. I've been in California for a while. My family's here. And I spent some time here after I graduated and thankfully left Los Angeles. And one of the things that came up was serving on boards and committees. So figured, why not? Why not apply? See if I can be of any service to the community. So that's ultimately why I'm here. My background is human resources heavy, although, you know, I've done everything from bagging groceries to roofing and all that. Not terrific at those, but... So when I go through your documents on your website and I see an issue with workforce, that's where I think I do stand out as far as developing promising prospects for folks who can grow in our community. So I guess that's a little about me. I'm open to any questions.
All right. Thank you, sir. And any questions from the board? Yes.
Mr. Mayers, thank you for volunteering and the answer is yes. You will be of service to the community in one capacity or another and I'm glad that you've got the heart of a public service person.
Yeah, well, thank you.
I guess I will ask you the same question I asked Ms. Main and that is with, or similar question, with reference to businesses that may choose to come to Douglas County, how would you assess whether they would be a negative impact on our quality of life or a positive enhancement on our quality of life?
Certainly. So the question is, we're looking at a prospective business and how would I determine if said business is going to improve the quality or undermine the quality of life? Well, I think I would want to know, I mean, this is maybe just HR me, but I'd want to know the mission statement, the core values of the company, see how those align with this county's needs. I'd want to know how many prospective employees they could hire from the community. I'd want to know probably if they're outsourcing a lot of their needs. I'd probably want to know where they're going to source their product from, depending on what sort of company it is. And I'd hope that it could be local. And I'd hope that we could write up an agreement of sorts. And this might depend on the type of business, if you could do this or not. I know, for example, cannabis businesses, they have to, a lot of times, create a specific agreement with the community on their promises as far as community service and issues like that. So I'd be interested in that. I'd be interested in seeing if they are willing to volunteer, maybe clean a highway up, that sort of thing. Not that that would be the end-all be-all of how you'd make that decision, but that's probably how I would assess it. And if they were going to hire local and hire a lot of people and they had a mission in their business that was about developing the skills of employees, not just pigeonholing them in an entry-level position and never giving them an affordable living wage where they could try to, you know, advance themselves, then I think that would be an issue. So that's probably some of the thoughts I'd have.
Any further comments or questions from the board? Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you. Mr. Mayers, I share Commissioner Hale's observations. I don't have any questions for you, except to note, I see your experience in community service. But as Ms. Hale's indicated, I appreciate your desire to get involved with our community in a volunteer manner. That's very, very important. This community could not exist, really, quite frankly, without the five or 600 volunteers that we have on a daily basis or in this one capacity or another. I did want to take the opportunity to indicate to you that we, on election years, which this is, we have about 20 boards that will have openings, potentially coming open in January, that this board will be making decisions on. So if we choose to go in a different direction today, other than yourself, I would hope that you would take a look at perhaps becoming involved in that process. I think we'll probably be taking applications for that sometime in December, maybe late November. But please take a look at that. I do, and once again, I say, I looked at this Good Shepherd Shelter in Los Angeles and I know that our food bank has needs. The help, you've helped with the Boys and Girls Club of Santa Maria and we have a brand-new Boys and Girls Club here. We have a, finally, we have a brick-and-mortar building. So we have a facility here and I know that they're going to need help. So I see, once again, a number of things where, and as backpack buddies and things of that nature. So there's ample opportunity for you to become involved and I hope you do so.
Yeah, I'd love to. Yeah, that's what I'm aiming for. So thank you all.
All right. Any further, any public comment? Saying none, bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just to note for the record, Michelle Pablo, Senior Deputy Clerk. There is no public comment online.
Boy, I'm batting a thousand today. Okay. In that case, do I hear a motion from the board?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I would, anyways, once again, I've looked at all three and all three are qualified. But I can't overlook the tremendous amount of talent that Ms. Main brings to this position. And so therefore, I at this time move for the appointment of Alicia Main as our private sector representative to the Western Nevada Development District Board of Directors due to the resignation of Kitty McKay and thank Kitty for her years of service. Thank you.
I will second that and also I just tell Mr. Main's how grateful we are for him stepping up and look forward to seeing you again.
Having said that, I will bring it back to the board for a vote. All those in favor of Alicia Main, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm going to assume that Mr. Tarkanian is unable to unmute.
I so much apologize. I thought I was unmuted. I'm in favor of it.
I could make a real smart comment right now, but I don't think I better. Anyway, thank you for that. Motion passes 5-0. And before we get to our next one, which will take some time, we're going to take a 10-minute break.
If we could get our commissioners back, we will resume.
Recording in progress.
All right, if we're all back in our places, we will continue with the administrative agenda. We're on item number three for possible action. Discussion to adopt Resolution 2024-R-080 authorizing the distribution of fiscal year 2024-25 transient occupancy taxes collected in the Room Tax Fund per Douglas County Code 3.14.020 Alpha to the Lake Tahoe South Shore Chamber of Commerce in the amount of $75,000 and the remaining funds to the Lake Tahoe Visitors Authority. And Mr. Morgan, you are on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Scott Morgan, Assistant County Manager, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I am up here just to kind of set the table for this agenda item, to do the best I can to try to alleviate any confusion regarding funding using room tax and the discretionary five-eighths of one cent. We do have representatives from the Tahoe Chamber of Commerce as well as the Lake Tahoe Visitors Authority who will also be presenting on this item. So what we are here to talk about is Resolution 2024-R80, which is allocating discretionary room tax dollars for promotion. And specifically, we are given this authority under Chapter 244, and it's highlighted up on your screen that talks about how the five-eighths of one cents can be used, and they can be used in a variety. This particular five-eighths of one percent is collected in the Tahoe Township. About a month ago, the County Board of Commissioners allocated the discretionary five-eighths of one percent to the Carson Valley Visitors Authority and agreed to come back and ask for additional information regarding funding to the LTVA or the Lake Tahoe Visitor Authority with a $75,000 contribution to the Tahoe Chamber of Commerce. A month ago, we got into a discussion about a number of things: microtransit, the Visitors Authority, and so the Tahoe Douglas Visitors Authority, the Transportation District. And so I want to set the table with it that we're really only going to talk about five-eighths of one percent collected in the Tahoe Township, and we're not going to talk about the remaining statutory nine-and-three-eighth cents, which is collected in the Tahoe Township, or the four cents collected by license tax. So there's a total of 14 cents collected in the basin. Of that, only five-eighths is discretionary in this matter. We will be talking in the future about the discretionary, we call it the TD, TD, the Tahoe Douglas Transportation District, which is a one-cent collected specifically for transportation that funds the microtransit program and other road projects. You'll talk a little bit about that later today on an agenda item for the Complete Street project where some of those funds are being used for that. But that's not our area of focus today. We're only talking about these allowed uses for the discretionary five-eighths of one percent, which is really to promote the area. And there are other eligible entities that have been evaluated in the past for events, but truly, the Lake Tahoe Visitor Authority is set up specifically to check these boxes of these allowed uses. So we are not going to be talking about the Tahoe Douglas Visitor Authority, although we will make some comparisons, but they receive the lion's share of the money of room tax collected up at the lake for promotion in convention center operations. And again, we will specifically talk about microtransit at a future meeting, and we're not going to be talking about the Tahoe Douglas Transportation District, which is separate from the Tahoe Transportation Actual District, which is a body of operation up at the lake. It's just odd that the legislature named the Tahoe Douglas Transportation District a fund, which you are the Tahoe Douglas Transportation District. And so we're not going to be talking about that much today, although there is some contributions to microtransit from the LTVA or the Lake Tahoe Visitor Authority. Not going to be talking about the Carson Valley transportation-related road maintenance projects, which is where the one cent outlined in statute goes down to the Carson Valley that's collected in the Carson Valley for Douglas County roads. We're not going to talk about that today. We're not going to talk about the Carson Valley Visitor Authority that does the promotion that you just gave, five-eighths of one percent at the a month ago meeting, or where they received their lion's portion of the room tax collected in the Carson Valley. Not going to talk about Douglas County Parks Rec Economic Vitality, which is the county's money that is received from room tax, and we're not going to talk about administrative costs that goes to the general fund for the administration of these funds. What we are talking about today is that, again, the five-eighths of one percent, which is mandated to be used for those specific uses, where Douglas County has during the budget process budgeted $847,000 and some change. And you're going to notice when you see the LTVA budget or the Lake Tahoe Visitor Authority budget that they budgeted $655,000 and change. And there is obviously a difference there. Obviously, their budget is less 75%, but it still doesn't equal out. They set their own budget, and typically, they are more conservative than the county estimate. And where I want to put everybody's mind at ease is, this is a budgeted number. Because this is a calculated five-eighths of one percent, they get what they get. They get what we collect, and not a penny more or not a penny less, based on your action today. So if we collect $750,000, that's what's going to go to them. They're not going to get, hey, you budgeted $847,000 and change, where's our money? That's not, that's not how it works, and they're aware of that. It is an actual pass-through expenditure. We just have to use a budgeted number for an expense. But for all the room tax dollars, they are based distribution-wise on actual numbers, with the exception of the Chamber of Commerce. They're going to get their $75,000 if this action goes forward.
Mr. Morgan, I think it's important to emphasize that even though we have previously in our budget negotiations and discussions in March, April, and May of this year, even though we budgeted $847,293, that is, that is not a mandatory number, okay? It's only based on our receipt of those funds. And so if that, if that were to drop off, and just, I'm going to exaggerate here a little bit, just so, just so the understanding of the public is, is that if that were to drop off and only be a quarter of a million dollars, $250,000, that is all they would get. They would not have this, that, the additional funds that fall under this 847 would not be made up by general obligation or general funds. So I think, I think that's an important distinction, is that you stated it, but I think it's important for us to restate that as a board, that it's only based on the revenues that we actually take in. It's not based, now, if the, if the amount goes above that, we're still required to basically give them that amount, too. Is that right? So if it came in at, at $900,000, that would be our mandate. Am I, am I correct in that?
Yes, Commissioner Gardner, Scott Morgan, Assistant County Manager. I think this slide is a great example. If you look at the actual numbers where you see my cursor kind of floating around there, 2019 to 2020, this is what they act, if we budgeted a million dollars, this is what we collected, this is what they got, minus $75,000. And I will tell you, based on this actual number where you see it go from 436 a distribution to 661, this is when COVID came and we set records. I will tell you that we budgeted far less. I didn't put the budgeted number up there, but I would tell you, we probably budgeted about $430,000 in distribution or around $500,000 total, and we collected $736,000 and we distributed to the LTVA $661,000, and you'll see the constant $75,000 distribution to the Chamber of Commerce. And so this is a good example of how those funds are distributed, based on the action that we are recommending, which is consistent with previous year actions by the Board in previous distributions. So with that, I am going to invite Carol Chaplin to come up, the Executive Director of the Lake Tahoe Visitors Authority, to carry on the presentation.
I'm okay for a few minutes.
Okay.
Thank you for, yeah, my bodyguard there has got my, my weapon with me. Thank you. Carol Chaplin, President and CEO of the Lake Tahoe Visitors Authority. Thanks, Scott, for that information. I thought that was really, really well put together. I have to say that. Scott has been very diligent in providing information to, to the commissioners on this item. I just want to hats off, thank you. And Commissioner Gardner, I just wanted to confirm what you had been clarifying about the, the collections and the distribution. In FY24, we're anticipating a shortfall in what we budgeted for that. I think probably Kathy would probably tell you the same thing, is that it's going to be a little less. So we, we totally understand that it is subject to collections, and maybe it's subject to how well we do in the marketplaces in order to support Douglas County and, and the community in general. So thank you for that.
But at the same point in time, Ms. Chaplin, as I understand it, you may have some windfall years.
Correct.
Where your, where your revenues actually come in well above what you had budgeted as an organization.
Absolutely.
Is that right? So you, you, you could perhaps build up reserves in that process.
Yeah, so that was, COVID was a good example of that, where we, we didn't spend as much money during COVID, but we also didn't, we didn't anticipate that we'd, we'd be so popular during that COVID, post-COVID time. It was unlike other destinations. Some destinations really suffered. We did not, because of the outdoor recreation that we promote and, you know, the alpine environment and everything else. So, yeah, it was over the top, and it's starting to level out again. So, yeah, thank you for that. So, anyway, we're on our mission. So the mission of the LTVA is, is to market the south shore of Lake Tahoe. That includes Douglas County. We are, the LTVA is by state, so we consider it one destination. As a matter of fact, we also consider the valley part of Douglas County as, as part of our destination when we, when we start to promote day trips and, and other events and everything else. So we are, we try to increase awareness of the destination, and we market nationally and internationally as, as we see our various markets index high for this particular destination. So this is, this is going back to a little bit of the TDVA. We do have an MOU with the Tahoe Douglas Visitors Authority. The TDVA is, is not focused, or has not been focused on promoting the destination as much as it's been focused on the event center most recently, but it was recognized in 2004 that, that the LTVA was the appropriate marketing organization for the destination, and the TDVA actually passes through money to the LTVA for marketing and promotion of, of the destination. So we have a little bit more on the LTVA and the TDVA. What the LTVA does for the destination is promote Lake Tahoe, expand and solidify the market base, identify geographic and consumer segments, and pursue active cooperative partners in private and public. The TDVA was, was formed about 10 years after the LTVA and was to promote tourism, promote recreation, planning for an event center or a convention center, event center, flexible space, and, and it also provides LTVA with the office space necessary. So the LTVA performs all of the marketing organization functions, and, and a couple of the staff members also kind of toggle back and support the TDVA in administrative services and, and Board operations. We have, on the LTVA Board, we have two directors appointed by the TDVA, which would be the Tahoe Township portion. Chairman Rice is, is our TDVA represent, one of our TDVA representatives. We also have two from the South Lake Tahoe Tourism Improvement District. That is our funding source from the California side. That is not associated with the city of South Lake Tahoe, but the, the actual business improvement district that is only lodging based on the California side. Sorry, Wes, I, Mr. Rice, I misspoke. You're not the TDVA rep, you are, are Douglas County representative. So we actually have three Nevada-based Board members at this time. And then we have two at-large directors, one that would be in the city of South Lake Tahoe and another Nevada-based at-large director. So I'm going to turn this over to our Director of Tourism, Yuray Soichka. You can call him George if you want. It's a little bit easier, but I try to practice as much as I can to get it right.
Thank you, Carol. Yuray Soichka, Director of Tourism for LTVA, for the record. So let's talk about programs and services. So what's included is our administration, Visitors Information Services. We have a visitor center in Heavenly Village that we operate and staff. Public relations, social media, marketing and advertising. Then we have sales, which is domestic, international, and meetings and conventions, and events. Moving on to the next slide, let's talk a little bit about integrated marketing and website services. So what does that, what this includes is a creative and media buy with always-on approach, digital first. So we have a flexible and changeable messaging, website search optimization, engine marketing and optimization, and then content creation and social media and research that is leading to data-driven decisions. And then moving on to the next slide, we're going to start talking about our budget. So this is our revenue portion of the budget, where you can see TDVA contribution and South Lake Tahoe lodging TID contributions. And then there is a Douglas County portion as well we are speaking about today. Other revenue sources are Celebrity Golf, sales co-ops, advertising co-op, and other commission on online sales and miscellaneous.
Can I stop you real quick and ask you a question on that? This is Danny Tarkanian. What is the lodging TID projects?
It's their portion of the assigned budget, how they, how they transfer funds to us.
I'm sorry, I don't know what TID is.
Yeah.
Commissioner Tarkanian, I believe the TID stands for Tourism Improvement District.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, thank you.
So their projects generate revenue?
Yeah, that's how they transfer their funds to us.
Okay. And the celebrity golf tickets, you keep all the, is that the gross sales?
Yes.
And then the volunteers, is that like what you say, their hours would have been paid if you had to pay for them?
No, we don't pay for volunteers. It's an expense associated with recruiting them and providing them stuff during the tournament.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but you have it under revenue. So why do you have $35,000 under revenue?
For the record, Carol Chaplin, President and CEO of the LTVA. So all of, Mr. Tarkanian, good questions on Celebrity Golf. It's a very, it's part, it's a very complicated part of our budget. So we do collect all of the ticket sales. We do collect some money from volunteers because they actually pay for the privilege of volunteering.
Oh, wow.
So those are, those are their, their uniforms. They buy their own uniforms. They pay for their own lodging. They pay for their travel. They pay for all of their food and anything else that they bring to the, to the destination. As a matter of fact, we just.
Are those costs that they pay for listed as an expense, then?
They are also, that's what I was going to point out. If you go to the event budget sheet, you will find that those, those are also expenses, but we have to show them as revenue accordingly.
Yeah, okay. No, I understand. I was just trying to understand, you know, the percentage. But the big issue, I think, that was brought up last meeting was, you know, how much is Douglas County putting in, how much is California putting in? So I was just trying to go over those budgets. If you go back up again, I just wanted to ask, I think there was one other one I didn't quite understand. Miltorp Sports, what is that?
That's a management company for the Celebrity Golf.
And they pay you $776,000?
Correct, their contract.
They pay you guys. Wow. Okay, all right, thank you. And, okay, so that's also with the Celebrity Golf. So all that's Celebrity Golf. Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt your presentation.
No problem. Thank you. Thank you, Carol, for clarifying question I misunderstood.
Can we pause there again before we move on and dig just a little deeper on the TID, Tourism Improvement District? So is that a voluntary, not voluntary, it's an assessment that was passed when a majority of businesses, is it one of those? When the majority of business voted it in, is it one of those things or is this something totally different?
No, it is a management district. So it is, there, there are, it is defined by geographical, it's the city of South Lake Tahoe, lodging properties only. It does not include general businesses like some BIDs do. It was formed originally in 2004, I believe. And so we are in the, it was just renewed two years ago, so it goes until 2029, or yeah, 29, 28? 29.
So was this initiated by the businesses or is it?
Yep.
Okay, so it's the similar model to a BID, it just isn't lodging.
It's the same thing, but specific to lodging.
Okay.
And, and actually, I guess the defining, and you know a lot about this, Ms. Hales, it's, it's, it is, it must benefit the members specifically. So we can't use money for roads, for instance. It is specific to the benefit of all of the lodging properties, which is promotion and awareness of their, of their properties.
Yeah. So basically, under this model, the, the businesses who are going to be affected are given a vote.
Right.
And if a majority, I don't know if it's a simple or a two-thirds or whatever, say, yes, we want to do this, then all of the businesses are assessed a certain percentage.
Correct.
And that money has to be spent to improve tourism that impacts them.
Correct.
But it is not a tax assessed by the government. It's the businesses themselves who have assessed this and voted it in.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I just have one other question. I'm sorry, go ahead.
As long as we're there, so TDVA, Tahoe Douglas Visitors Authority, that was set up by statute. Is that, is that correct?
TDVA was, is, is NRS.
NRS, statute, okay. Whereas the TID, the South Lake Tahoe Lodging TID was not set up by statute or California statute. That was, that was something that was established by the businesses.
Correct.
Okay. There's a huge distinction there.
The framework is authorized by statute and set forth. The process is set forth in statute.
The, the amount of money in the LTVA budget is not by statute. It's not a percentage of the total TDVA revenues that come in. It is, it is, their, their, TDVA passes through money for marketing and promotion as the TDVA board dictates, and then, and then that's put into the LTVA budget.
So Ms. Chaplin, I guess going to the final, you've identified the line items. Now the final deals, if the lodging TID is actually a California business revenue, although I'm not sure if you'd count that as a government contribution, I'm looking at about $3,500,000 from Douglas County and about $2,740,000 from the California governments. Am I correct? Are we paying about $740,000 more than the California to the LTVA? I eliminated, I eliminated all the Celebrity Golf.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna depend on your mouth. I'm not, that's not, not my forte, doing mouth in my head. But, but just remember, the TDVA is not, is, is not a jurisdiction. So.
But it's money, it's money coming from Nevada. I mean.
It is, it is money for coming from Nevada, but it is to benefit the Nevada businesses specifically.
Okay, and I'm not going to beat a dead horse because I'm not there, so I, you know, I don't want to hold everything up. But my understanding, the big concern our citizens had in the last meeting was, is Douglas County paying only their fair share or they paying much more than California to have their businesses promoted compared to California's businesses? So I'm trying to get a figure of that amount. You certainly got to count the money TDVA gives. You count the Douglas County, it's $3,500,000, $530,000. South Lake Tahoe Lodging, I assume, is something government agency that they have there. They give it 2.673 and the Lodging TID 73 more. I just, so there's a, there's a, there's a pretty good discrepancy there. Is that how it is normally every year? Is it unusual that Douglas County is giving more or why is Douglas County paying more? They getting more promotion than your, maybe the, the LTVA is giving California side?
Carol Chaplin, for the record. Mr. Tarkanian, it's, it's a little bit, I don't, I don't know how to answer your question. I mean, we, we don't, we don't break our budget down by a per-room spend between Nevada and California. We are one destination and we are promoting all of the assets and amenities and attractions and lodging properties as one destination so people can take advantage of that. Your larger properties are in Nevada. Most of that, that's your largest room base with our four casino properties. But this is also a budget. This is not necessarily the expense. So just remember, this is, this is budgeted revenue.
So you promote more than just hotels. You promote businesses. I'm sure you're promoting the, the recreational businesses on the California side. And I'm only talking about the contributions that each side is paying. I mean, we've had the same issue with the micro-transit. Douglas County is paying far more than California is and we're getting less service. The question that many of the residents have, you're going to hear this in public comment, this isn't coming from me, I'm just trying to get their answers, is why is Douglas County paying so much more than California?
Well, Douglas County in the budget is $655,000. The TDVA is collecting TOT and lodging license fee, but.
And TOT and lodging is from Cali, is from Nevada businesses. Nevada's, Nevada's hotels and Nevada's VHLs.
Correct.
So it's Nevada money. It's Nevada taxpayer money.
It's not taxpayer money. It's.
Okay, so the TOT money that Douglas County uses to pay for roads, is that not Nevada taxpayer money?
TOT comes from a visitor who stays overnight in a lodging property.
Exactly, exactly. I, I'm sorry. So, but it's, it's from Nevada use that somebody is paying for. It's a tax in Nevada for Nevada use. Okay, that's okay. You've answered the question. I don't, I, I don't mean to take you away from the rest of the presentation. Please go ahead.
Thank you.
All right, Yuray Soichka, for the record. Let's move on to the breakdown of administration, visitor information services, public relations, marketing and sales. You can see administration portion is 6%. Visitor Information Services is 1.9%. Public Relations is 4.4% and marketing is over 50%, to be exact, 55%. On the sales side, the expenses are on a 6.2%. And moving on to the next one, on the event center, you can see the total expense is 4.9% and there is a micro-transit contribution of $50,000. And then moving on to the event, events, where you can see where the Celebrity Golf expenses are taking place. When you compare the revenue and expenses, we actually do lose money about, I don't, I don't have exact number, but it's approximately $300,000. So we pay more towards that than we actually make.
Okay, and before you go on, I had a question. Would you have staff and administrative costs on each of these different categories coming up? Do you have a staff and administrative cost for the actual LTVA? Why do you have it separated in each of these different categories? You have events here and if you go down further, it's going to be the next categories. You have administrative costs for each one. Why weren't they all lumped together? Does staff and administrative people only work for events and only work for a portion of whatever is being used out there?
Yeah, so the staff is being broken down between each category. The reason why is that we can hire vendor to execute that function as well under this section of the budget. For example, let me just put it in a perspective, social media, we have them in-house at this moment. We have a person that is in charge of social media. If that person decides to resign, it takes us significant amount of time to replace that person. But we can act quickly and hire vendor, outside vendor to run the social media. This way, we don't have our constituents complaining why we are not promoting them through social media or destination as well. So that was the reason why we allocated funds like that.
Okay, so the different vendors for each one of these different categories.
So that's, that's staff, but it can be allocated to the outside service if needed.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, I just want to interject that we asked for more transparency and you're giving it to us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. And to wrap this up, I will ask Carol to come back to the podium.
Carol Chaplin, for the record, President and CEO of the LTVA. I get the $4 million question here, I think. So our total revenue, as you can see, is almost $9 million and our expenses are $13 million. That would make any, and our shortfall this year will be over $4 million. I have a board of directors, some of them are in private business. That was a gasp because most of those folks are not going to present to their corporation a $4 million deficit over the year. We have a reason for that, and that is, is we did not spend money during, our balance sheet is rich this year. The board wanted us to invest in some special projects and we are committed to executing those projects. But the, during COVID, as, as Ms. Hales had suggested or, and Mr. Gardner had suggested, we have over budget, under budget. During the COVID years, the two, two and a half years, we did not spend much in advertising, marketing. As a matter of fact, we didn't spend much in any of our, our categories. And then we got, and then we, we were the recipients of a lot of people who were trying to get out of wherever they were living or whatever box they were holed up in and get out into the greater outdoors. So we benefited from that. So we are, we are spending down on our reserves this year. You can go to the next slide. Unless there's questions on that, do you want to stop right there? Okay, good. I think we're done. Is there any, are there any last questions on, on how we are spending Douglas County funds? All right. I got my stuff sent.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman Scott Morgan, Assistant County Manager. I'd like to introduce the team from the Tahoe Chamber of Commerce, the Lake Tahoe South Shore Chamber of Commerce. And I know, I'm not sure who is presenting.
Hi, I'm Kristy Kriegen. I am the CEO of the Lake Tahoe South Shore Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for having me here today. Thank you very much for the presentation, Mr. Morgan. As this slide notes, we are a Chamber of Commerce. We are a proactive membership organization dedicated to developing, promoting, and representing the South Shore business community. We are the in-market promoter of all businesses with an emphasis on those that serve visitors as well as local residents and customers of our by-state region. Thank you. Our budget is much simpler. The Douglas County portion, which is $75,000, is in gold. Eldorado County gives us almost with a funding agreement. It's not statutory. We actually have a funding agreement that we must do reporting on annually. It's approximately the same. Our events are in gold there and then our membership is in blue. And as you can see, our total members are 307 right now and that is 140 in Nevada, 167 in California. And I will note, something not on this slide, is that our Nevada businesses are actually our most quickly growing sec, segment of our membership, which I think is really interesting and really points to the by-state nature of what we're doing.
Before we go, we find it easier to ask questions now and get answers versus going all the way to the end and then questions and then having to bring the slides up. So I hope you don't mind the interruption.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Right, Mr. Chair? Anyways, okay. Anyways, one of the big questions that was raised a couple of weeks ago when we, when we talked about the 5 eights and the $75,000 is a big question that our, our public had is what is the, and it hadn't really, to my knowledge, been revealed to us previously. And by the way, I appreciate your attendance here today. I should, I should preface that, but I think this is the first time you've been presented to us. So anyways, congratulations on your position. It's fairly new, right? So, okay, well, thank you. So the question was, is our contribution is $75,000 a year and is there a comparable or was there a comparable contribution from Eldorado County? Okay, because it is by state and we didn't certainly feel like it was appropriate for us to be paying a lion's share in, in Eldorado County enjoying the benefits of our lion's share. So I'm, I'm very appreciative of this particular slide in identifying that because I think that's what our public was looking for is, is the, is the transparency of that particular thing. So we're almost on a, ours is 75, theirs is how much?
It's 78.
78, okay. So very comparable. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And, and thank you for your, I've been in this position now since the beginning of June. So I'm just getting my.
You're coming into the real lion's den here real quick, aren't you?
Yeah, really. So thank you. Thank you for having me. Yes, and I wanted to say, I watched, I watched your prior meeting and all the comments and I really appreciate the opportunity to be here and to be as transparent as possible because it's really important, as we know, with public money to let our public know how, where it is going and how it is being spent. And so I, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to show this to you all. So our total Nevada business members, as the prior slide showed, was, is 140. It's probably about 147 right now. And the Douglas County business members specifically are 76 members. And that represents approximately 7,300 employees, which is a big, a big piece of our workforce that we're really proud with our chamber to be able to, to represent and promote. In, in collaboration, sorry, I want to say one more thing, in collaboration with our partner, Lake Tahoe Visitors Authority and your Carson Valley Chamber and, and your staff here. So we really see all of these funds as leveraging each other.
Now, you, okay, Mr. Scott, please, don't go so fast, okay? As we're, so the number of Douglas County employees represented by these businesses, 7,300, has there been any, what's the analysis on the, on the California side? How many, these, these may be Douglas County employees, however, they're not all necessarily. Obviously, 7,300 are not all Douglas County residents, right?
Exactly, yeah.
So have you done any study on the number of businesses? Obviously, you know how many businesses are in Eldorado County or South Lake Tahoe and how many business members, how employees are represented in that?
That was a great distinction also about county residents versus county employees because obviously this does not reflective of that. And as Ms. Chaplin mentioned, the biggest employers, many of the big employers are the casinos that we have on the South Shore. So that really is probably the bulk of these numbers. And the South Shore, California side, businesses are for the most part smaller apart from Barton Hospital, which, which is, is a chamber member and would be the biggest, the biggest employer there.
If I may chime in, the slide just before this shows the number of businesses which California edges out Nevada by 27. That's a little bit relevant. Nevada is 140 business members and California is 167. So, yeah. 27 businesses.
Yes.
Businesses, yeah.
Wouldn't you say Heavenly is a pretty large business with a lot of employees?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
I was, I was only curious, Danny, Commissioner Tarkanian, is we have a number on the business members, 140, and we have an understanding that that's, represents 7,300 employees. Of the California business members, 167, how many employees are involved in that number is what I was asking?
Yeah, and I think she said there were a lot less and she said because there's so many employees at the casinos. Is that correct or did I misunderstand you?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, but I mean, isn't there a lot of employees with Heavenly? I mean, maybe not a casino, but I would think there'd be a lot number there too.
Yeah, that's true. I, I left them out. I was thinking about Barton. Yes, that's true. Heavenly, Heavenly Vale Resorts is a member also and they have a lot of employees also. I, I hand counted these numbers and so I did not go through and hand count the California numbers. I would be happy to get that to you later though. numbers. I would be happy to get that to you later, though.
It's not important to me unless it is to Commissioner Gardner.
No, it was just, it's not important. I was just curious. It was, is a matter of curiosity more than anything else.
All right. And our final slide, the Tahoe Chamber is a 501(c)(6) as Chamber, our nonprofit corporation formed under the laws of the state of Nevada and governed by a board of directors. Chairman Rice is the board member for our chamber. And we are a membership-based organization, promotes local economy, stability, business advocacy, governmental relations, and civic, cultural, and educational activities.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Scott Morgan, Assistant County Manager. That concludes the presentation today. I have up here the proposed action, and I also included last year's action. So you can see that they are very, very similar, other than the budgeted dollar amounts that are in those figures. And I failed to point out that we have a Deputy District Attorney, Zach Wadley, in the audience, and he would be available for questions along with any of the other presenters.
I had one additional question. Thank you. So the $75,000 is a locked-in number, okay? That does, that's not a floating number. But the, but the other number, the 824 that we budgeted, is a, is a floating number based on actual revenues. Is that, is that correct?
Scott Morgan, Assistant County Manager. That is correct.
Any other questions from the board? That's a surprise. And seeing none? All right, since there's no more questions from the board, before I take a motion, this is for possible action, and we will open this to public comment.
Hello again. I've sat through most of your meetings for the past several years. I don't know if I've missed any or not, but I do remember ones where this whole subject was brought up and transparency was requested. From what I was just watching, I think the Chamber of Commerce presentation was very transparent. Numbers were very clear. I don't believe the other organizations were as transparent. To me, it was very confusing. Money comes into this one, gets shifted over to this one, gets spent here, comes from all these different places. Is there a line-by-line audit that you folks see on just exactly where the dollar per dollar comes from and where it goes to? I think that still needs to be opened up. I don't think that that presentation was very clear, at least not from my point of view, being a taxpayer out here in the valley and everything. So that's my comment, and I don't think that that transparency that you had requested before has been completely fulfilled. I think it needs to. Thank you.
Elizabeth Lernhard, for the record. I completely concur with the previous speaker. I also would like to refer to the extensive questioning that Ellie Waller submitted. She cannot be here today due to her personal circumstances, but I do not see any transparency. It's, in my mind, unclear how two agencies in two states have a tax statement, and I guess that poor accountant must have a headache doing it, when there is mid-year employees switching ad will from one side to the other. That must be a major tax hurdle, in my eyes. I think without a complete accountant review, with profit and loss in simple terms, as we all are used to as business people, it would be much more transparent and easier to understand who does what. Also, I am puzzled, the Tahoe Douglas Visitor Authority has not provided any statement of their accounting. So I would really very much request that they come back and do so. And why do we have to send Douglas County money to South Lake Tahoe? It's still unclear to me. The county webpage states TOT funds have to be spent according to SB 461. Section 13, Item 6A states, the funds have to be spent exclusively on advertising, publicizing, and promotion of tourism and recreation. Even the NRS 244.3354 allows TOT funds to be spent on the similar projects. We could spend the same funds here in the county without having to send it or being forced financially by the law of either states. Natural resources and climate, a community-wide trash removal at the beaches, particularly in view of the microplastic problem at the lake, would be appropriate. Additional bus stop shelters would be a great idea. And when it comes to transportation, as mentioned before, the microtransit should be funded to reach all Douglas County residents, as was proposed by Steve Tesara and Lou Feldman at the Special Border Commissioner Meeting May 23rd and 22. Why that was changed, I don't know. But even Commissioner Gardner stated, it was not clear why 250 feet into the state of Nevada required a $600,000 contribution. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Michelle Pablo, Senior Deputy Clerk, for the record. Just for the record, there is no Zoom public comment at this time.
So there's no public comment? Okay, thank you. In that case, I am bringing it back to the board. And I'm ready for a motion. Go ahead.
Oh, I'll, I'll jump in with my thoughts. Probably many of you remember that earlier this year, I think, early in the year, we had Ms. Chaplin here, and she presented a lot of information about TDVA and LTVA. And at that time, we asked for periodic reports. I mean, maybe not locked into, it might have been two a year, I don't know, something. And, and more transparency. And what she presented today is just, she and her colleague presented, are, is just a small part of the information that's in our board packet. And I believe that we're taking good steps towards more transparency. And, and to the point of, it appears like there's a lot of shuffling. That's because there is. It's complex. And complex matters are by nature complex, and therefore can't be boiled down to simple and easy to digest frameworks. That said, we, we can continue to make improvements on the transparency, and I can continue to make improvements on my ability to understand LTVA and TDVA. But, that said, I very much enjoyed reading all of the information in the packet. And I took several side trips. In fact, I went to Rules to Lake By, which is fantastic. This is great work. And I, I want to spread that Rules to Lake By to everyone who comes to Tahoe, because we all want to continue enjoying it. And that kind of campaign is so important, and I'm very pleased you're doing it, because we love the lake. It's our backyard. It's, it's where I'm at every Saturday in the summer and some other days. And so I appreciate that work. And, and that's valuable work. And just because we don't understand all of the interactions between the different agencies, doesn't mean they're not legitimate and, and important. And I, I, so I, I'm, I'm a voice of support for this work. And while also stating, I have aspirations to have more clarity and understanding, and, and we'll get there, I believe. Thank you.
I'm going to throw my two cents in. I have been on the TDVA and the LTVA and the, well, just about everything else at the lake for six years now. And it has taken me a long time to understand the interactions and the pathways that, that are used. But I'm here to tell you that every year, they're audited. And that audit is, I'd hate to be audited like they are. Well, as a matter of fact, I am being audited. Thank you for all the extra IRS agents. However, I am perfectly confident that the money is being spent wisely. We have come up with nationally acclaimed projects such as Lake Tahoe Ah and then some, which is one of the, the leaders of the industry in, in capturing, in, I don't understand a whole lot of how they, they do all this, but they capture the number of people that visit the website. And that's how they determine whether they're successful or not. And I mean to tell you, what, what they have been doing is amazing. And the accolades that they have gotten nationally are amazing. And the Love Tahoe Gently is amazing, because that's not my back door. That's my front door. And I don't appreciate people coming here and trashing Lake Tahoe. And they have had a major campaign to try to put a stop to that. And anyway, it's been a pleasure to be part of those boards. And I am very confident that every, every dime is being accounted for properly. And with that, I will bring it back to the board.
So, Mr. Chair, I had a couple of comments as well before we go to a motion. So anyways, I think it's important to point out to the public once again that these funds were already budgeted in our budget cycle, but they are, the allocations are only dependent upon the actual revenues received, not, not anything supplemented out of the, out of the general fund. The 5 eights, as I understand it, is mandated. And, and so the question then, several weeks ago, when we did this in regards to the, the Carson Valley Visitors Authority, was, was similar in nature. It's, the question was really, at that point in time, is whether or not we could reallocate the $75,000 that we currently allocate to the Lake Tahoe South Shore Chamber of Commerce. And when that discussion came up several weeks ago, my question, once again, centered around the appropriateness, or the, or the level of contributions from the by-state or basically California side. And to my understanding, after discussions and the presenters today, it's actually exceeds the, the revenues that, that we allocate here at 78,000 versus 75,000. Yet, yet we benefit tremendously by the number of employees that it benefits as well, the 7,300. I'm sure that far exceeds what's available as a workforce in California. So I certainly want to make sure that our, you know, and the other thing, and I guess the real question is, you know, we have three entities here promoting South Lake Tahoe, Tahoe Douglas Visitors Authority, Lake Tahoe Visitors Authority, and the South Lake, Lake Tahoe South Shore Chamber of Commerce. And, and then that doesn't really account for all the businesses also, that do a lot of self-promotion themselves. So we have a tremendous amount of money going into the efforts of pulling in visitors to that area. And of course, that trickles down, you know, really, believe it or not, it does trickle down to the valley floor, because we have restaurants and businesses down here that, that people frequent. So anyways, I guess that was my only question is really whether or not the, the 75,000 was, was amenable to what, or comparable to what South Shore, or I should say, the Eldorado portion of the county, the state, the by-state was contributing. And, and so I'm comfortable with the allocation of 75,000 to the Lake Tahoe South Shore Chamber of Commerce out of this, out of this, out of this fund. So unless, other commissioners have anything to?
I have, I have a statement.
Mr.?
I wasn't, I wasn't going to get, I wasn't going to give a statement. I sort of asked the questions, which I think showed where my concern was at. But after listening to the other commissioners talking, all gloss over what I think is the most important issue is, how much money is Douglas County providing for the services they're getting compared to California? And I understand Commissioner Gardner's statement about the Chamber of Commerce, which appears to be equally split, or a little bit more actually for California. But with respect to the LTVA, it looks like there's another 740,000 that Douglas County's paying, or Douglas County businesses are paying through their transient occupancy tax. And I don't see, and I haven't heard an answer, why we're paying so much more than California. I'm going to vote for this issue. I mean, I don't think I'm, there's no reason I would hold it up. But I think there's an inequity in the, in the amount that Douglas County's paying there, and I'd like to get an answer from that, from, from Ms. Chaplin at some point, on why we're paying so much more.
May I jump in? It's, it's statutory. It's mandated by statute. So we have, we have discretion in where we, where we send that money. I mean, discretion being either a fair board or a tourism, a organization. That's our discretion. The amount is not discretionary.
No, that's not true, Chair, Commissioner Hales. We have discretion where to put the 5 eights of 1%. And we're going to give this to the LTVA. We don't have to give them any of that if we didn't want to. And, you know, I don't, I, it seems to me, they're probably the agency that has the best opportunity to promote tourism at Lake Tahoe. So I'm not saying we're misusing those funds for this purpose. But we don't have to give them that much. But why are we giving them that if California's not? Why isn't California paying more of their share?
Okay, I, I think we're saying the same thing. We have to give that amount. We don't have to give it to LTVA. Right, there's not a lot of other options that meet the qualification for where we can give it.
I, I agree with you there. I just would like to see California give a little bit more to match up with ours.
I'd love to see California give more. I think we all would.
I'm done. I'm sorry. I didn't, that's all.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
I will move that we adopt Resolution 2024-R-080 as presented.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion by the board? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nelson carries 5 0. And with that, we will take another 10-minute break. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And he opposed. Nelson carries 5/0. And with that, we will take another 10-minute break.
So Kel Drive Complete Street Project, I'm going to give an update that Megan had prepared. It's a complete street project. The inception of the project started around 2011. And in 2018, in 2000, right after 2018, Tahoe, Nevada Tahoe Conservation District started the design of the project, and it's been moving forward ever since. There's been some expansion, the Kel Vision 2019, privately funded with public and agency Here's an overview of the project. The leg that goes out towards the water, Lake Tahoe, would be Kel Drive, and that's the vicinity of this project. The project goals and objectives. So the project consists of reconstruction of Kel Drive, new sidewalks, a multi-use path. It's got water quality components to it, as well as multimodal pathways, I think I just said that, and then some urban wildland wildfire interface with lowering the power lines underground. The goals and objectives are to increase the safe multimodal transportation options for pedestrian cyclists, improve public safety by bringing the road up to county standards, correct the drainage issues along Kel Drive, improve the riparian and Lake Tahoe health by disconnecting the urban runoff, reduce the potential for catastrophic wildfire by putting the power lines underground, improve the view shed, improve access to the U.S. Forest Service and Douglas County Regulatory Lands, and improve the communication and economical potential by installing broadband through the OneDig policy. I'd like to point out that the Kel Drive is a GID-maintained roadway, but there are elements in this project such as the pathway, the stormwater, water quality structures, signal work, and that are county assets. So there are county assets involved. The parking area, bathrooms, and trailhead there are maintained by Douglas County Parks and Rec. So the road is used for various purposes other than just the Olive Park GID and the Beach Club. So why a water quality issue? Well, two of the largest, two of the largest Douglas County water quality basins are at the end of Kel Drive. We collect water from US 50, the NDOT right-of-way, and county runoff. And there's, by improving that, we're going to get 69 credits from the TRPA for Lake Clarity. The groundwater issue right now is pretty high in the way the drop inlets for the storm drains, their work, the old ones are only about 10% to 20% efficient. We get a lot of bypass from those storm drains currently. The new drop inlets that are designed on the project are going to be about 95% efficient. Studies by the Nevada Tahoe Conservation District and El Dorado County have shown a poor PCI of the roadway is a source of FSP. And what FSP is, is fine sediment particles, and we want to keep those out of the lake. That's really what causes a lot of the clarity issues, is the fine particles that make it to the lake from the road.
Mr. Urb, could you also let the public know what the PCI stands for also?
Payment Condition Index. So it's the overall ranking of the road. And if anybody has driven up there in the last, I would say, six years or more, you would know that this road is in pretty poor shape.
We unfortunately took one of our DART vans through there a couple of weeks ago when we went to the Tahoe Summit and experienced a tremendous amount of back massage through the process. It was not, it was not a comfortable ride.
Okay, next slide. So total maximum daily load, Lake Tahoe TMDL mandates jurisdictions around Lake Tahoe to reduce the input of the fine sediments and nutrients in the lake. This project is what is, that's the intent of this project, is really to reduce those fine sediments. There are three ways to reduce, through area-wide stormwater projects, road operations, and parcel BMPs. BMPs is Best Management Practices for maintaining onsite sediment. Certain number of Lake Clarity credits must be obtained with goals to meet every five years. Next Douglas County goal is in 2026. We need 168 total credits to meet that goal. So this project will add to our goal. The basins on Kel are responsible for up to 70 credits, which is a large portion of the county's credits at the moment. And improvement of conveyance will reduce the maintenance needs and the costs of maintaining those water basins.
Phil Richter, Director of Public Works, for the record. The county's current TMDL credits on record is around 105. So again, this project is crucial to us meeting the next goal over the next five-year period.
The current conditions, as you can see, there's, in the first picture, there's a catch basin out in the middle of the road, really doesn't catch water there. You can see the big pothole off to the left. And then the current curb and gutter, the way it doesn't flow, there isn't a gradient there that allows flow all the way to a drop inlet. So it fills up with sediment and mud, and you can see it's a maintenance issue for Olive The proposed conditions will include bike lanes, a separate sidewalk on the residential side, and a multi-use path on the right side that will lead up to the existing trail system and bathroom and trailhead parking facility. So this project has a lot of components to it and a lot of input by different agencies. There's been quite a few meetings since 2014 with Douglas County, the U.S. Forest Service, EPA, NDOT, TRPA, Olive Park. So there's been a lot of coordination, and I give Megan a lot of credit. This project, there's a lot to it and a lot of coordination and project management involved, and she's been doing a great job with this project. So let's get to the funding and cost summary. Right now, 1.82 million is going to go into the water quality. 755,000 would go into utilities necessary for road construction, 1.21 million into the road construction, 370,000 bikes and bike and pedestrian facilities, for a total of 4.15 million right now is the estimate. The funding that's secured is 3.955 million, and that includes... is 3.955 million, and that includes this action item of 400,000 to be transferred from TDD into the project. There is an expected $200,000 shortfall. There's been some discussion, and Megan's having to try to secure that funding through the Tahoe Fund and TRPA. There are quite a few funding sources involved in this project. There's several grants. There's a grant from Southern Nevada Public Land Management Association of $780,000. Nevada Division of State Lands with $1,040,000. NV Energy is putting up $350,000 to split the costs of putting the power lines underground. Oliver Park is putting 100,000 towards the design. Douglas County with this item would be putting $400,000 towards the project. And then the HUD grant, the congressional funding that came available to Douglas County, which is in the next agenda item, was $1,385,000. So what's the schedule of this project? Megan's is in the process of finalizing the plans and creating a bid package to go out at the end of, to be finished at the end of this month. And she'll be submitting for a special improvement permit with Douglas County and wrapping up the Forest Service Special Use Permit for items on, on Forest Service property. The goal is to advertise the project no later than October 18th of 2024, and open bids November 26, 2024, and looking to start construction in May of 2025 through October of 2025. That's kind of the construction window up at Tahoe, and then finalize the project in December 2025 for the funding deadlines with all the grant requirements. Current, current design status, it's, is final utility plans with NV Energy is being completed. The current, there is some coordination with the current 3R project to repave Highway 50 next summer. All permitting is complete except for the Douglas County Special Improvement Permit and the Forest Service Special Use Permit. Then, then the solicitation documents and the final bid packages to be prepared and advertised. And then there will be a site tour next year at the Tahoe Summit of the project on August 13th at 9:30 a.m. So that's Megan's PowerPoint. Megan, if you have anything you would like to add to the project, now's your time.
No. Thanks, John, for giving that PowerPoint. I know that the board has seen some of these items before, but the most important thing was just the update on the schedule. We're looking really close to having final designs. The thing we were really, that stopped us from doing any construction this year was waiting on the NV Energy designs. We have those now, and then we have the other pole occupants designs for undergrounding from Frontier, and so we are looking good to stick to that schedule that John just presented. And the site tour already happened, but we will be sticking to the schedule now for hoping to bid this project if this funding is approved today, starting to bid by October 18th and then opening bids by mid to late November.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So question, and I know that this, I'm surprised that this is, you know, it's, it's, once again, it's like government moves at the pace of a sloth in the middle of winter covered with molasses, right? I mean, because we've been discussing this for a number of years now, and I actually thought it, I was surprised that it's taken this long to, to pull this off. The funding for Fund 236, where, where, where are those funds derived from? Can you tell me that?
John Urb, for the record, that's a good question. Fund 236 is the Tahoe Douglas Transportation District, and it is funded through the Tahoe occupancy tax, I believe 1% of the Tahoe occupancy tax.
Okay. And it was better coming from you than me, okay? Because I, I knew the answer, but I just needed confirmation, okay? So these funds, as I understand it, these funds are the 1%, that comes off the TOT, okay? And they're funds raised in the Tahoe Township and must be spent in the Tahoe Township. Am I correct in that regard? Or are there exceptions to that?
John Urb, for the record, you are correct. They can only be, per NRS, they can only be spent in the Tahoe Basin on transportation-related projects.
And road maintenance?
And road maintenance.
Okay. Because I have a number of constituents, certainly in my district, that say, you know, why are you giving money to Tahoe when, you know, we have a tremendous amount of disrepair roads in my district, especially, you know, South County? And I have to constantly remind them that those funds are generated where they are generated and must be spent where they're generated and cannot be transferred down here. So I just need to continue to put that on the record for, for the residents in, in that area. So in the 1.385 million HUD grant, so that, because I understood that that was kind of the last piece of the puzzle a couple of years ago, when we, and we had previously allocated 1.385 out of the 1% TOT tax in, in anticipation, hopefully, of receiving that HUD grant, and, but making sure that we had this fund or these funds complete should we not get that grant. And so we've been the beneficiaries of that grant, so therefore, we didn't have to take that 1.385 million dollars out of the Fund 236, 236 previously, right? So.
John Urb, for the record, that is correct. At the time of applying for the congressional funding HUD grant, the engineer's estimate since then has increased. As you, as we all know, inflation has really hit the road industry hard. So as time went on, that funding kind of became inadequate, and so the request for the 400,000 to meet the ask to complete the project and, and since there's assets of Douglas County within that project, that's why this request is coming forward.
This isn't going to completely, completely eliminate any funds we have in that Fund 236. It's not the complete amount of money that we have in reserves in that account, right?
No, it will not, it will not deplete the funds. There is funds being reserved for future road projects in that, in that Fund 236, the TDDD Fund.
Okay. I mean, I would have to recognize that the Oliver Park GID is probably one of the most underserved GIDs in our county, maybe, maybe second in line to TRE, Topaz Ranch Estates. But, so I'm, I'm proud that they stepped up to the plate and were able to take $100,000 out of their funds to work on this. So I commend them for that, and I thank them for that, because it will benefit them and benefit the county and do all these other things that you listed up there. So anyways, once again, I'm, you know, but we can't delay on this, because the costs are going up on a daily basis, okay? So, so while we have the funds, let's get it done, in my opinion.
Any further comments from the board? Mr. Tarkanian, you have your hand raised.
I had just a quick comment. Thank you for seeing so far away. I just wanted to commend Megan Kelly. I've worked with her a lot in some other projects, and I know how much you've been involved in this one. I'm just so thrilled that it's getting done. Thank you so much, Megan.
Any more comments from the board before I open it to public comment? Okay, before I do that, I'm going to put in my two cents' worth. This has been a project that has been on my radar since before I ever got elected. When I was with the Round Hill GID and working with the surrounding GIDs, this was recognized as a great need for a very, very long time. And I am so pleased that I will see this done before I leave office. I'm thrilled. Anyway, thank you. And I will now open this to public comment.
Can't let one go by. My question is, is where did this all start? What was the genesis of?
Your name?
Oh, Jim Jackson. Forgot. The genesis of this whole project, what, what created the need for it, and who was the one, who was the initiating source for it? That's question number one. And of course, you know me, everything relates back to my favorite subject. You've got a lot of money that is going into this. A lot of it is, has to be spent there. Where are you going to find the money when you have to fix Johnson Lane and all the damage done to our area and stuff? But I would like to know how these projects get started. Sounds like a good project. Clean up the area, make it look really nice and pretty. That's what we want for our area, too. So, thank you.
This is Megan Kelly. I can try to answer that question, since I've been involved in this project since 2011, although I know John Urb was there, too. This project specifically, Kel Drive, came out of the South Shore Area Plan. There was a vision for the South Shore side of Douglas County Lake Tahoe that was presented there, just kind of, you know, redevelopment-type vision for that. But I have to say that the Conservation District pursued Kel Drive, you know, tirelessly, because we couldn't solve the water quality issue that Kel Drive produced. It, it receives run-on from NDOT and also other county facilities, and the, the water quality basins that we had helped the county install one way back in 2005 and, and one as recently as 2018. It, they just weren't getting all of the runoff because of the drainage system along Kel Drive, and so that's why we tirelessly pursued rehabbing Kel Drive, so that we could fix the drainage. And, and that's kind of how this originated. And so it was identified in the South Shore Area Plan, which are kind of planning things that the Regional Planning Agency, TRPA, does all around Lake Tahoe. And then when we were looking at solving some of these stormwater issues for the Tahoe TMDL, this just became such a big part of the Douglas County credits that we couldn't ignore it. And so the only way to fix it was to fix it the right way, because it was a street that was probably one of Douglas County Tahoe's first, Tahoe Township's first streets, probably built back in 1920 to access Tahoe's first airport, Sky Harbor Airport.
Thank you.
Maureen Casey, for the record, speaking as Planning Commissioner, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. In 2019, when we started working on the master plan, this was discussed, it was included. And I think I can honestly say that when it was included, it was one of those. It's a wonderful project, but will we honestly be sitting here as Planning Commissioners when it's completed? Because it's such a huge project. And I know that the departments across the county have been working diligently to implement some of the goals and projects in the master plan, but a great kudos has to be given to John and everyone in the departments that have been working on this over the years to secure the funding, to coordinate with all the different agencies. This road is horrendous, and it affects so many different lives. And it's so exciting to see it happen, and I just wanted to extend my thanks to you for securing the votes to get this happening for the residents, for all of us who visit up there. And please extend your very best and your congratulations to the staff for all they've done. Thank you.
Elizabeth Lernhard, for the record. I couldn't agree more with Chairman Rice. As a resident of the Tahoe Douglas District, I really think that residents have waited overdue time to get this fixed. And I'm so pleased that it's moving from planning to an actual execution state. I do agree with the funding with one additional consideration, that there be a written agreement for future ongoing maintenance between Douglas County and the new owner of the Lakeside Casino Lot, Barton Hospital. This agreement should also include financial terms to their use of the county parking structure on the east side of Highway 50, which they obviously intend to utilize since they proposed that sky bridge across it. In addition, if I may address Commissioner Gardner, this committee had sent 1.2 million down to fix Mallory Parkway last month, and you might want to give that as a good reason for your, for your constituents. And I would like to remind that we all, even the people down here, as Commissioner Hale said, go to the lake and have to negotiate these roads. Thank you for your attention.
Is there any further public comment? Mr. Urb?
I don't want to take any credit that's due to Megan. Megan is the engineer on, on this and has done a tremendous amount of work on it. So, thank you, Megan.
Do we have anybody online?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Michelle Pablo, Senior Deputy Clerk, for the record. At this time, we have no public comment online.
All right. And since we are handling both of these at once, I have been advised that one says we have to have two public comments, one says one public comment. Is there anyone that didn't get their public comment out on either of these items? Seeing no one, addressing to the mic. I will bring it back to the board.
So, Mr. Chair, I'm going to offer a, a combined motion, if that's good with the We're good? Okay, very good. So I move for the approval of the expenditure of $400,000 from Fund 236, the Tahoe Douglas Transportation District, for Douglas County's contribution to the Kel Drive Complete Street Project within the Oliver Park General Improvement District, and approve a sub-grant agreement with Douglas County and the Nevada Tahoe Conservation District, NTCD, to transfer the 1.385 million HUD grant awarded to Douglas County to TNTCD for construction of the Kel Drive Complete Street Project as presented.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. And we have only one item left on the agenda that, and I think I got you out of here almost on time, Commissioner Tarkanian. So I will read this. Thank you. And this is for presentation only. And Staff Presentation on the 2025 Community Development Block Grant Program, including a summary of potential projects and timelines for funding, Linda Doherty. a summary of potential projects and timelines for funding, Lynda Doherty.
Okay, good afternoon, Chair, Commissioners, everyone. Today is just a brief presentation to speak about the CDBG program. And the CDBG stands for Community Development Block Grant Program, which was created in 1982 under the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Oops, go too far here. So, so this is for the 2025 grant cycle. You'll see in the first sentence, I have a typo, it says 2024, I apologize. Should say 2025. This year, we, the amount of money being allocated is $2.8 million. And so this has to be shared amongst the 26 rural counties in Nevada. And I do have a list.
Twenty-six?
Twenty-six.
No, I think we have 15 rural counties. Or 26 entities?
Twenty-six entities, sorry. Yes, that's correct. And I do have-
Sorry, I didn't mean to correct you there, I just-
Oh, no, that's okay.
I'm going, did we grow by counties?
Yeah, it's here. I do have a slide that does show the entities that are eligible. I've also attached that in the, in your packet so you can have a chance of reading it. It'd be a little bit bigger, but you'll see Douglas County, for low to moderate income, we're deemed at 37.65% as a whole. We do have some areas that would exceed that in our county. Let's see here. Okay. All right. The summary of past performances, this is from 1982 to present time, and this is the total amount of grant money that was allocated to Douglas County since that time. So it's a little over $4.2 million, which is really not a lot since 1982. But we do open up for applications every year. The grant cycles always start on July 1st. We have a few interested parties currently, but they have to go through a process where they will be deemed eligible or not, and that will be determined in late October. So if we have any applications that are deemed eligible, then I'll be bringing those back to you in December, so that way you can look at them, vote on them, and rank them. So we'll see what happens. This, I've attached this in your packet as well, because it's pretty hard to read, but this is just showing that the total amount equals the 4.2 million. We didn't have any eligible applications in the last cycle. Okay. The fundability, there are, there are two tests that, that have to be passed here. One is meet a national objective, and one is meet an eligible activity. You know, I hate just reading off the slides, but this is the information. So, so there are three different options for national objectives, and an applicant must meet one of these. So the benefit 51% or more, low to moderate income persons, aid in the prevention of elimination of slum or blight, address a recent urgent community development need. And these urgent needs are usually related to some kind of catastrophe, whether it be flooding or earthquake, fire, those kinds of things. So this CDBG program is through the Governor's Office of Economic Development, and they call themselves GOED, so we love our acronyms. They, they have said that they want to focus on infrastructure this year. However, they will consider all applications they receive. Let's see here. There are some categories of projects. So area benefit is one. This is where the benefits have to be available to all residents in a particular area. 51% of the residents in that area must be categorized low to moderate income, and the area served must be primarily residential. There are different tools available through the GOED's website. One of them is a HUD map, where we can put in an address, and then it creates a map, and it will tell exactly the percentage of LMI. That's the most commonly used, easiest also. Limited clientele is another category. These are primarily, this list here, children who are abused, people who are homeless, adults who are severely disabled, spouses who are battered, people who are elderly, adults who are illiterate, people living with AIDS, farm workers who are migrant. Another, and these are, did I go out of order? I'm so sorry. Thought I, thought I had it going here. So some funding ideas, removal of materials and architectural barriers to improve accessibility or mobility of elderly and severely disabled adults by assisting, reconstruction of public facilities, rehabilitation of privately-owned non-residential buildings, rehabilitation of common area of residential structures with more than one dwelling unit, micro-enterprise assistance for LMI owners and persons developing microenterprises, job training and employment support services. Public facilities is another category, and these eligible activities include the acquisition, construction, reconstruction, rehab, or installation of public facilities and improvements, including infrastructure improvements, neighborhood facilities like parks and playgrounds, ADA accessibility. They may qualify under national objectives, low to moderate income area, low to moderate income limited clientele, low to moderate income jobs, slum slash blight, when the activity aids in elimination of or prevents slum and blight. Economic development is another category, and that includes the acquisition, construction, reconstruction, rehab, or installation of commercial industrial buildings, structures or other real property, equipment and/or improvements, assisting a private, for-profit business, including micro-enterprise assistance, providing economic development services in connection with CDBG-eligible economic development activities, job training, placement, or other types of service, public service or economic development, excuse me, economic development, rehabilitation of publicly and privately-owned commercial structures. Planning and capacity building. These activities could include plans to assist in determining community needs, plans related to implementing a CDBG-assisted project. All planning grants must lead to a project. Public services, job training, crime prevention, health services, childcare, substance abuse, fair housing counseling, energy conservation, welfare service, recreational services, down payment assistance. Housing rehabilitation can qualify under these national objectives, low to moderate income housing, slum blight area basis, slum blight spot basis. So there's a timeline. The next deadline is October 18th. So applicants, what happens is, I would have to open an application for them, send them a link, and then they go in, and there's essay questions and, you know, selection kind of answers. And it's just to determine eligibility, and those applications have to be submitted before the end of the day on October 18th, and then I would have to submit those on behalf of the applicants. And then late October, I would be informed by the state which projects, if any, can move forward. And a note, some projects obviously won't get chosen because there's not that much money for 26 entities. But they could either be denied, or they could get less money than they're requesting. There's a committee with the state that decides all of this, and once it gets to that point, you know, we don't have any input as to who gets selected. But if we have applications that you want to move forward, that's where we come in. And then if they get to move forward, then there's a lot more paperwork that has to get done. But we'll look at that later. And as I mentioned before, any applications that are deemed eligible, then I will bring those to you in December. February, everything has to be submitted, it's, it's all finalized. March, April, they'll make the recommendations for the funding. June, governor letters go out. July, that's when the actual awards are sent, and the projects can start. They can't start prior to that because those monies spent may not, they won't be covered. Oops. So our next steps, we ask for public input, past potential projects, additional project ideas, and, you know, we basically just move forward from there. So that's all. Sorry for the lists, long list.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Yes, I have a number of questions, Mr. Chair. So, thank you, Ms. Doherty, for the presentation. Earlier in this meeting, we approved Item G on our consent calendar. That was the acceptance of a community services block grant. That, that has nothing to do with this. That was a state award, right, and has nothing to do with this. This is a federal program, as I understand it. Okay? And you stated that we have statewide $2.8 million for 26 different entities that are eligible. Okay? You're right, not a lot of money, really, when it comes to 26 entities. So a GID may find themselves in a position where they could apply for these grants based on this criteria, is that correct?
That's my understanding, and that's actually specifically something I'm waiting to hear back on, on the state, because I've heard conflicting information, and so I want to make sure. But I have spoken to somebody with the GID that you're talking about-
Yeah.
-and given them information, you know, how all of this works. And so if, if that turns out not to, if they are not eligible for some reason, then I'll let them know, and I can let you know as well.
And of course, they have to meet that criteria. They would have to meet that criteria for lower to medium income area, right?
Right.
But it's a geographical area, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And, okay, that's, that's good to know. And how, so, so even though these are federal funds, and they're awarded to each state, and the state has determined that we have 26 entities that are eligible for distribution of these funds, okay? It's the Governor's Office that has sole discretion on how these funds are dispensed? Is that correct?
Yes, they're the ones-
Okay, so it's not a federal process? It's a, it's a state process that will award the grants?
Yes, that's correct.
Based on what they determine is their criteria this year and their pet projects, so to speak, or their interests, right?
Right, right. It's federal money, but it gets administered through the state.
Okay. Yeah, I, okay. It, it looks like a, it looks like a great program. But, so I understand it, they, they will submit their application to you folks. You will vet it to make sure that it meets the criteria, and then, and then as I understand it, you'll rank the number of applicants that we have coming forward. You'll rank them in, in order of what you feel is, is the Community Development Department deems as eligible and perhaps should be on a priority list. And then you'll bring that back to us in December, as I see that?
Yes, you as the board will have the final ranking. I mean, as Community Development, we will review everything, and, and of course, any that are, that don't meet the criteria, we will kindly tell them that they don't. But, yeah, the final ranking will be up to you all.
Okay, okay. And then, okay, so then, so we will rank them on, on December 5th, and then submit that back to you folks, and then you'll go forward with what you need to do in regards to accumulating the required paperwork.
Correct.
Is that right? And then, and then submit that to the state, and the governor will have to make that decision in June.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, a lot of hoops to jump through, always is for federal grants, so. Okay, thank you for your attention to this program. And so folks that want to become involved in this program, or actually figure out whether or not they qualify, should reach out to you in the Community Development Department. Is that correct?
That's very correct, yes. Yeah.
Thank you. I'm done, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Now that I'm thoroughly confused, no, no. You were very comprehensive, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay, Mr. Tarkanian, are you still with us? I don't think so. Okay, this is for-
I am with you, but I had you on mute. Please don't kick me out. Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, that was for presentation only, there will be no public comment. And for presentation only, announcements, reports, updates from county commission members, including updates on the various boards and/or commissions that they may be a member of, or liaisons on to, or meetings, functions they have attended, and any request by a commissioner for discussion of a future agenda item. I will start at the far end. And, well, actually, I'll start with Commissioner Tarkanian. Do you have anything?
He is on the far end, yes.
I am on the far end. No, I don't have anything, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Gardner?
Okay, thank you. So I attended the Chamber of Commerce Board Meeting yesterday morning. It was a very short meeting, there wasn't a lot of folks to give us reports, so. And the Visitors Authority, Kalasun Valley Visitors Authority had canceled their meeting this month, so I didn't attend that, obviously. Water Conservancy District that I attend, that I'm a member of, I missed that meeting this month because I was touring or cruising around New England, trying to keep my wife happy, so. And then Douglas County Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. So it's interesting, I took an opportunity on, I believe it was Wednesday morning to, maybe it was, anyways, Wednesday morning? Yes, Wednesday morning. I guess it was just yesterday morning. No, Tuesday morning, Tuesday morning. My days are all confused because of the holiday, okay? Tuesday morning, I took an opportunity to visit our community center and witness the unloading of the restroom for the pickleball courts. So I, we, we've invested $600,000 in pickleball courts and another $400,000 in restroom facilities. So those pickleballers out there should be very happy with our million-dollar expenditure in regards to promoting their sport. Pickleball is becoming, it is fastest-growing sport in the, in the country, and I don't know whether I want to report this, but it's even on the cruise ships now, so. And the lines to get into that are excessive, okay? So anyways, and then, of course, we have the NAOCO Convention coming up at the end of this month, '24, '25, '26, so looking forward to attending that on behalf of the county. And, and that's it. So, thank you very much.
Commissioner, I said?
Yes, I had the, enjoyed the Audit Committee meeting yesterday morning. What came to me very seriously was this. On June 13th, 2024, Moss Adams conducted an in-person surprise cash count for the fourth quarter to review key internal controls. quarter to review key internal controls. The county, the entities inspected were the Sheriff's Department, Tahoe Motor Vehicles, Tahoe General Services, and Tahoe Justice Court. One of the things that came up that was very interesting was this. Upon arrival at each department, the departments requested our driver's license, our business cards, to verify that our identities match the individuals on the surprise cash count cover letter provided by the county's chief financial officer. Being a former member of an outfit called Quality Control, that fits Quality Control. Very, very good. And the rest of it was the sort of resurrection of the area where we had Tyre Gate. There was a lot of work done, and they've recovered almost totally right now. And the only thing I had to add to that was, the lessons of history, if ignored, will be repeated by you.
Well, I took the opportunity on our extra week to do some extra visits to entities that we don't necessarily have jurisdiction over, but that are important in our county. One was Tahoe Douglas Fire District. I spent three hours with Scott Langren, and that was really informative and interesting. I went to the Sheridan Volunteer Fire Department barbecue, and that was very fun. I took a tour of Buffalo Creek Art Institute, which is a fabulous place, really amazing. And lastly, I took a tour of our swim center, and they do just top-notch work there. On the line of things that I'm more directly responsible with, I took a tour of China Spring. Things are going well there. I attended my NNDAs meeting. I've had some meetings with South Shore Transportation Management Association representatives to lay the foundation for how things are going, our understanding of how things are going there. I met with Brooke Lane, who is a county supervisor from Eldorado, and we discussed transportation. I walked around the proposed Barton site and various other Tahoe sites. I attended TRPA as an alternate, because Chairman Rice was on a well-deserved vacation, attended the chamber lunch, attended the airport open house. That was a great event. Really enjoyed the things they had going on there, and appreciate their good work. And finally, the Carson Valley Arts Council and the Cultural Arts Foundation of Douglas County held their first-ever joint event, which was an arts mixer, and I appreciate the fact that they are working together. They are doing good work as separate entities, and they are also linking arms to advance the arts in our county, and I appreciate them doing that. Thank you.
Thank you for that. You reminded me that I also attended the Sheridan Volunteer Fire Department barbecue. The cornish game hen was delicious, and unfortunately, didn't get to sample any beer, but oh, well. Yesterday, I attended a TTD meeting, and we are discussing how to replace our executive director, who has tendered his resignation as of January. So that's one of the big things that we're discussing, as well as the South Lake Tahoe in Eldorado County are trying to see if they can do a joint venture to take over some of the transportation on the South Shore on the California side. And that's what I have to report. And seeing nothing else from the board, I will open closing public comment. Our action lasts. So at this time, public comment is again open.
I took some notes. It's unusual for me to do. I haven't done that since I was in college. There was a couple of words, and I'll use your own words, that I found very interesting and extremely important. One was during the first proclamation that was issued. Said the rights in the Constitution were extremely important, and that should be observed and fought for by all entities, including you folks. Well, we have rights up there on Johnson Lane, and we feel that those rights are being infringed by one company. And that it really is going to be up to you to help us out, so that our rights, our property rights, are not infringed upon. My property, we had an estimate, could possibly lose between $50,000 and $75,000 in value if that mine goes through, and they travel on the road that is within visual sight of my house. That's a pretty good-sized hit. Mine's not the most expensive house up there either. The other one was on the W N D D, and there, the quality of life was brought up, and that is very important in Douglas County, that we have a good quality of life. Well, that's what we're asking for. We don't want our quality of life to suffer because of one company, or one federal agency is wanting to get their way, and will do whatever it takes to get it. The other question that comes up constantly is, what are we really negotiating for? They've made it clear what they want, and they will sue you if they don't get it. So what are we negotiating for? We'd like to know. And when will we know what's been going on in negotiations? Or will it be at the very last minute, where it will pop up, we'll have very little time to respond to it? So that's another question that has come up. There's also a group of people that are trying to get the EPA involved, to completely shut down the whole operation out there due to health hazard. So far, there's been a couple of responses. We're not sure what's going to happen yet, but they seem to be receptive to it. The other thing was, is in the paper the other day, Carson City decided to turn down a business that wanted to put in a storage unit in a residential area. Now, the storage unit didn't create noise, didn't create dirt, didn't create traffic hazards, but their reason was, it did not fit with the neighborhood. Well, if anything doesn't fit with the neighborhood, is what's going to happen up in Johnson Lane. Anyway, I would like to request to be able to meet with any of you at any time, at your place of discretion, to discuss what's going on, and to give you some insight as to what we're doing up in our area, because there are some things going on in the background, and I think it's only fair that you know about them. So, thank you.
Elizabeth Lernhard, for the record. Transparency. It's not just what is presented, but also what is omitted, and that's what I'm lacking today. It does not challenge my imagination or understanding how these entities interact. What challenges us is what we're not being told and need to know. And I appreciate it, if this board would ask for, since Commissioner, Chairman Rice has volunteered, that there is a regular accounting audit done with these two entities, TWVA and Lake Tahoe Visitor Authority, that we are being, that it be made available to us and to this entity. I think, when it comes to the TOT, there obviously is an agreement now between Commissioner Hales and Commissioner Tarkanian, that it can be spent on other entities. We have the law here. I can give you a copy if you can't find it. We can spend it on other things. We do not have to put it on advertisement in an out-of-state entity. And when it comes to the controversy, who gets preferential treatment by transportation needs and others, I think when I, I might come back to that, it might help to explain the TRE residents, that it is not an issue between valet TRE and the lake, but between another state and another city that has nothing directly to do with us, except we share a lake together. Thank you.
Is there any further public comment? Anything online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Michelle Pablo, senior deputy clerk, for the record. There's no online public comment at this time.
Mr. Chair, before you close the meeting, I had a quick public comment.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. You know, we presented a proclamation today regarding Citizenship Day and Constitution Week, and I think it's important for our public to, you know, I don't know that we gave enough pause to that, okay? The fact is, is that we declared independence from Britain in 1776, fought a Revolutionary War that ended in 1783, and just four short years later, I mean, you consider what we try to do in four years as a board member, four short years later, 1787, the Constitution was approved, okay? That's four short years, with quite a few members. Since that time, 237 years, we have only seen fit, in the United States, to amend that document beyond the Bill of Rights by 15 times in 237 years. What an incredible document that stands today to give us life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness as a country and as an individual. And while some people say it should be a living document, I don't agree. And so anyways, I think we need to take pause to, and congratulate and thank those marvelous men back in 1787, who came up with that incredible document. That's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, with respect to a living document, I agree that it shouldn't be a living document, but there is a process whereby the Constitution can be changed, and it has been attempted myriad of times, and yet we only come up with a total of 26? That's great.
With that, we're adjourned.